All right, welcome everyone. This is the Placerville City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2024. If you'll all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
All right. Number three, we have no ceremonial matters. Closed session report, City Attorney Abrahimi.
Thank you, Mayor No. The council did meet in closed session today on two matters. There was no public comment. I wanted to provide a little bit of background on item number one, State of California versus the Kroger Company and Albertsons. This was participation in a settlement agreement against Kroger and Albertsons, which is a national opioid litigation. In order for the city to have been able to participate, we'd have to enter an settlement agreement before August 12th. The council voted 5-0 to allow participation. The city will have a .022% weighted allocation of any settlement participation. The county as a whole would receive .79%. By comparison, South Lake Tahoe would receive approximately .066% if it participated. And any contributions of this amount would go towards opioid mitigation crisis in our city. So, we would use that. And then on item number two, the council provided direction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move to number five, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, we will move to six, announcements and presentations to the public. Six point one, brief comments by the city council. Councilmember Gepper?
I have none tonight.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
I forgot my phone. We got a very nice, we get a weekly report from our city manager, and there was a very nice thing in there, and I was going to read it because it was, it was touching and cute. Basically, though, it was about someone who was using our services in our recreation department, two-year-old toddler getting their first swim lessons, and I think if I remember correctly, it had never been anything bigger than a bathtub. And this was this child's grandmother, I think, and they shout out to Savannah, if I remember correctly, I think that was the person's name. And I think it's important that we recognize folks, especially in that regard, because, you know, they're loved by the people that are there, but they don't get a lot of love outside of that environment. So I thought I'd say a shout out to them. And it's also kind of important to one of our discussions today about budget. So, anyway, go Savannah, and it was just a very nice note to get from somebody in the public. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Yarborough?
Yeah, so actually, over the weekend, I was actually able to attend the 90th anniversary of CNH Motorsports. So it was, you know, a part story. It was really nice, they had a great crowd. It was really nice to see that many people come out for a business that's been in our city for so long. So, just a shout out to them.
A couple of things. I had, Mayor and I had a meeting with, what is it, Merchants on Main Street and then also up at Escaton, and I'll let her speak a little bit more to that. And then, I had a great time at the fair this past weekend before. I think, you know, we were, the gods were nice to us and blessed us with mid-80-degree weather so we could actually go out there and enjoy it and not die in 100-degree heat. So I just want to thank all the volunteers and fair staff and everybody else for another successful fair here in El Dorado County. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, as mentioned, we attended Merchants on Main Street and had a discussion with them kind of about events, and invited them to the July 30th meeting where we will talk more about events. We met with some folks at Escaton who were worried about fire danger and folks camping on properties, so we took a tour in the very heat of the day and looked at that, and we'll kind of talk more with them and help them work on that. Sat through CSD interviews, a whole day of that. Yeah, yeah, we had that as well. And then last Friday, we had the law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics, and that is always just a really fun event. Yeah, so we will move to six point two, receive and file presentation by El Dorado Disposal outlining their performance for the 23-24 fiscal year.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity and the time this evening to present to you guys kind of a year in review and share some initiatives for this year as well. My name is Christopher Brown. I'm the district manager at El Dorado Disposal and obviously with some of my team members back here as well. So, to kick things off this evening, I just wanted to take a look at 23. Hopefully, this works. Over here? So, just in review, obviously, as we know, and you guys know, predominantly a residential customer base here with a smaller commercial base. You know, a large amount of our constituents in Placerville are utilizing the ability to have an extra recycle container, which is a good, good thing for us. For us in 23, really a strong improvement and just continued performance in SB 1383 adoption, so as most of you guys are probably familiar with at this point, but SB 1383 is the new organics bill with the intention to remove, you know, green waste and food really from the waste stream with the intention to reduce landfill volumes. So, really good continued performance with us in that, in that category. And then, you know, I guess another win for us, as we've continued to see it, the MRF is our green waste loads have been really clean, and by that I mean, not a lot of yard, not a lot of plastic bags coming in in the organics loads, which is really a good sign. It's a big win for us as well, so. Oh, oh, did I get it to work? There we go. Okay, on the community engagement front, just another fun year for us. As you guys know, we really, we really appreciate the ability to get involved in the community and attend events. For us, it's, it's a really good opportunity for us to have one-to-one conversations with customers. You know, I think some of this lingo and these changes in policies can be confusing or what have you, so when we're able to get out in the community, attend different events, get engaged with people one-to-one, we can, we can help bridge some of those hurdles. Pulled off a community cleanup event in partnership with, with the city and their staff, collecting just over 29 tons of trash and then a little bit of organics waste as well. So, I will say too, just up here on this community event list, by no means are we limited to these. We're always willing to look at different organizations, different opportunities to get involved in how we can do outreach and education. So if there's something that residents are bringing to you guys, or there's opportunities, please don't hesitate to share with us. What you see here is the performance standards with our annual results aligned on the right over there. A lot of different numbers and different metrics here, so I'd just like to focus on the couple of them. Obviously, you'll see that there was a really strong emphasis on the commercial outreach part. Our sustainability team met with 178 commercial businesses within the city limits. A lot of this tied to SB 1383 implementation and education, so a lot of work from that team going out to businesses, doing educational content, but also just giving them best practices, tips and tricks, and doing some rollout stuff there as well. So, on the special removal front, you'll notice we removed over 600 special items. When we talk about special items, we're talking about oil, batteries, things of that nature. That 600 number only reflects what we picked up curbside, so that doesn't reflect what of those materials, batteries, oil, things like that, that were brought to the MRF for processing. And then I thought another really important number to, to present was, you know, over, roughly 1,800 customers dispose of HHW at our facility, which is a really good sign. Obviously, we don't want that stuff in the can, so good to see that really overall people are using our programs that we have, so. So this is a breakdown of the change in CPI year-over-year. We use this index really as a metric because we know that generally speaking, costs are going to change along with CPI. So, this percentage change allows us to cover most of those changing costs. Obviously, there are, there are some metrics there where the costs are outpacing that, but again, you know, just, just a metric we use to gauge some of those changing costs. How does this impact the rate payer? Obviously, that's what everybody wants to know. So, displayed up here, you'll see the common residential rates. For us, there's always been a really strong emphasis on trying to keep that 35-gallon senior rate manageable for those folks who do that. I always like to remind our folks that with these rates or included in these rates is any, is the combination basically of four carts. So you get your trash cart, then you get a combination of three additional carts. So whether that be two organics carts and one recycle cart, or two recycle carts and one organics cart, all of that is included in this rate as well. And then, another reminder is, the 35-gallon senior rate is listed up there. There's also a 10% discount on the 64-gallon and the 96-gallon for seniors as well, so.
Can I stop you just really quick? And we were talking about this early, what exactly is the age for seniors?
65.
65, that's what I thought. We were just double checking. Thanks.
No problem. Obviously, guys, we're well into 2024, but I just wanted to share with you guys some of the initiatives for this year that we've already got off the ground and that we're going to continue to focus on. I'm sure, as staff has shared with you, we've seen just really the success of our compost program within the city. We launched this in 2023. Were able to basically bring 180 tons of compost back into the city of Placerville that was then distributed to the residents or made available to the residents for free. Well ahead of that in 2024 and poised to meet our goal this year as well. I'll tell you, on the compost front, I think we were cautiously optimistic that this was going to be a hit, and it's definitely surpassed our expectations. If you guys haven't driven by, you know, it's slowed a little bit as we've gotten into the hotter months, but many times, there's people over there all day and that material is moving, which is, that's the intent. So, so just really good to see that and excited to expand that and continue to, to do programs like you've seen up here with, with our sustainability team in partnership with city staff, doing some educational programs and how people can use this material and stuff like that. So, we're really exploring the opportunity to do textile recovery. So a lot of times, your textiles, or we find textiles in the trash. Textiles are heavy, too, so we see a really good opportunity to get textiles out of the waste stream or out of that, that black lid trash can. You know, I think early on, our idea is, is to get this located at the buyback centers so that way, you know, folks are coming to get rid of their glass bottles or cans or plastic, they can also bring, you know, if they did a spring cleanout or something, they can drop their textiles while they're doing that, that action as well. But, just an opportunity to get another, I guess, heavy trash item out of the waste stream and, and get it diverted to a better use. Our MRF renovation is going to be completed in October, probably the thing we're most excited about. Just a lot of really good opportunities that this is going to bring. Number one, it's going to improve safety and efficiency for all of our customers. The hope is that, you know, we don't have people backed out to Bradley or to Highway 49 anymore, that the reorganization can help with traffic flow. We're going to upgrade the HHW facility, and by that I mean, we'll, we'll have the ability to accept more volumes. And then two, as we expand and we look at different vendors, we're really looking at the opportunity to be able to process solar panels. Right now, that's a super difficult process, and so we're actively working on that right now and what that looks like, as we know. Lot more solar than there was just a few years ago, so being able to intake that material and process it is something that we're actively working on right now. Contamination is going to be a big one for us. You know, we, we entered this era of sort of wish cycling where we, when we were educating the public, we were telling people, like, if you don't know, just put it in the recycle can. Unfortunately, things have changed, and now we got to do a, a strong emphasis on reeducating people. Right now, we know that there's on average about a 25 to 30% residual in that combing of streams, so that what that means is, we bring in a, a truckload of recycle, about 25 to 30% of that is trash. And so it has to be moved out of the recycle and put, pushed over into the trash and then therefore landfill. So the big three for us are really going to be plastic bags. We've got to make sure we get plastic bags out of the recycle stream. Styrofoam is the other big one. We order the Amazon stuff, and a lot of times, we don't take the packaging, packaging out. We just put the whole box in there. And then really, batteries is another one that's been a huge for us, that we're seeing frequently. And, and I would say any kind of electronic goods, we see a lot of that in the, in the recycle waste stream, and if it doesn't cause a truck fire, it potentially causes a fire at the, at the MRF where there's a lot more material, so. And then, you know, we're excited to kind of partner with city staff to pilot some new cans down here from Main Street. We're looking at, you know, Big Belly as a brand, and we're going to, we're going to pilot some of that in partnership with the, with the city and see if that can, can help us with the issues we have with the Main Street cans, which are, you know, it's hard to get stuff in there, and people don't really kind of differ between the trash and the recycle and that action, so.
Can I stop you for?
And then of course, right, I think it's important, we talk about EV. Obviously, the state of California continues to push electric narratives. I'll tell you, what we can tell you about EV technology is that it's definitely very still experimental, so I think there's still a lot of unknowns. I can tell you that costs to implement EV are extremely high, and then I think for all of us who know our county well and know our territory well, you know, you can imagine trying to operate in this geographical location with all electric vehicles, there would definitely be some challenges there, too, pulling grades and mountains and, and things of that nature, so. Again, a lot of unknown, currently piloting some electric trucks in urban markets, but still very exploratory in that manner. So, thank you guys for your time this evening, and happy to take some questions.
Great. Thank you. So you talked about people are putting batteries in the garbage. Where, do you have curbside battery recycle? Do you take them at the center? What would you tell people with the, who are, who are bringing batteries in?
Yeah, absolutely. We do free curbside battery pickup, so a customer will call in and request a battery container. It's just, we deliver them a little jug. We ask that they tape their batteries, put them back in the container. You call us when it's full, or if you don't want to fill it up all the way, you can fill it up halfway and let us know. We come back by and pick it up.
Do you tape both ends of the battery?
We ask that you do tape both ends.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Why? I, I've never heard of this taping of batteries.
They do it at the city. If you, if you look at the city where they have theirs, that's taped.
Positive and negative ends can arc or...
Tape the batteries, okay. Right on. Well, and I think some of the confusion, like, with the recycle stuff, a lot of the styrofoam has the recycle marker on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a matter of education.
Very much so. I think, again, there's that, the chasing triangle that goes on a lot of things that unfortunately, when it's processed, it isn't, you know, we can't recycle that stuff. So, yeah, I would say, you know, we, we've totally revamped our, our waste guide and our guides that go out to our residents with really clear, all of our newer carts that go out, so a couple of years, about a year ago, maybe two years ago now, all of our new carts on the lid has a big in-mold label with all the do's and don'ts on there, so we're hoping that some of that starts to help and then just continued re-education.
Great. Do we have more questions? Councilmember Saragosa?
Thank you. Thank you for today's update. It sounded quite, I mean, I, I am thrilled that the composting is going as well as it's doing, because I was like, oh my God, we're going to have like mountains of, of compost and we're not going to know what to do with it, so.
Yeah, I was kind of with you.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm really happy. Just a question, and again, great news on us meeting our 1383 number so far, but is that, is that like us meeting a very small scale at this point because it's still going to ramp, or is this like, are we, are we doing really well regardless? Just trying to figure out where we are in that whole scheme.
Yeah.
Because I, I know there's still a lot of confusion about putting, you know, food waste and napkins and stuff into the green, so just...
Yeah, good, good question. So, the way that the policy is written is, we kind of, we're operating on how it's written right now, so there's different, it's different per commercial, per residential, so with servicing organics, curbside every other week, we're 100% compliant with expectations from the state. On the commercial side, it's a, it's a trash threshold. So if your commercial business has two yards of trash, there's a threshold there where we have to go in, do an audit, say, okay, you know, you're a restaurant, you've got two yards of trash, you have to have organic service. So, there is some of those businesses out of the 242 or the, no, sorry, the 400 and some that are here, that are exempt based on that threshold, but from where the threshold is right now, we're 99% compliant, so we're doing really well.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that update.
Yeah, so with the composting program where we're able to go pick up the compost and use it wherever, on the scale of what we're supposed to meet, where, where are we at on that? I mean, are we getting close? Are we too far away? Or are we over exceeding the use of it?
Yeah, good call. So, or good question, sorry. We're at the 240 some odd tons, sorry, let me flip. I want to say the goal for this year, again, that's a state mandated and it's, it's an escalator.
Right.
We're going to meet our goal this year. And if we wanted to, we could surpass, but we'll, we have the ability to bring more than we need to, but we'll, we'll meet the mandated goal for, for the city, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then obviously, it escalates next year and, but yeah.
Well, that's good. It sounds like we're on track, and thank you, Mr. Brown. We really appreciate our partnership with El Dorado Disposal. We'll take questions from the public now and comments. Thank you. Okay, we'll open this for public comment.
Thank you, Ruth Michelson. Sorry, I didn't hear the whole presentation, but I am a diehard recycler. Let me tell you, very serious. And what I wanted to say is, I think it's so helpful when they can really be so clear as possible, even maybe a laminated card about what is and what isn't, because for example, clam shells, you know, that salads come in, that's something that was neither mentioned that is or is not recyclable. And so I called and after, you know, some deliberation, they came back on the phone and said, yes, it is. So, I think the public's very interested, but since things change over time, we just need to be kept informed.
Great.
Like, and the other thing I wanted to ask was, I know that El Dorado Disposal both comes to the city and the county. Maybe this isn't pertinent to this presentation, but I just wondered if, how often do you put out for competitive bid, the waste? Because I know that sometimes, year after year, increases are given to the company, and I just wondered if you make it competitive. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll answer all the questions afterwards. Other public comments, questions?
Sue Rosenrodman, resident of Placerville and customer of El Dorado Disposal. And they have been very faithful. Every week, they're there. If my driveway is covered with ice, I call and let them know not to come. I don't want it to crash and burn on the driveway, but they do a great job.
Great. Thank you.
Marcia Massa, I'm a resident and I work in Placerville. I wanted to say that I feel the rates from El Dorado Disposal are more than fair, especially because all that they do and the services that they offer. I also wanted to say that I appreciate their philanthropy. I commend them for all that they give back to our community.
Good evening. My name's Hillary Mulligan, and I live here in Placerville. I've worked in the nonprofit sector for 26 years, so I like to support, like to voice my support for El Dorado Disposal. Not only do they give excellent customer service, but their core company value is to integrate in the communities they live in and to give back in a meaningful way. Nonprofits can't survive without generous support and sponsorship from companies like El Dorado Disposal. If you consider almost all of the events that you go to here in El Dorado County, whether you're a guest or a volunteer, inevitably, El Dorado Disposal is one of the top sponsors. You'll see their logo, you'll see their staff members. For example, the Placerville Props Cops and Rodders, annual fundraisers, significant funds that come in to support our local CHP, Ag in the Classroom, Hands for Hope, the El Dorado County Fair that some of you attended recently, El Dorado Hills Area Foundation, Women's Fund El Dorado, Grizzly Flats Community Center, El Dorado Disposal was the top donor in helping with that rebuild, and they recently purchased the land where they intend to build the community center. El Dorado High School Foundation is a recipient of their funds, Ponderosa High School Foundation, Ponderosa Band Boosters, El Dorado High School Sports Boosters, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, our Fire Safe Council, and Marshall Hospital Foundation. The list is enormous, and they continue to give back in such a positive way. So I hope you'll support El Dorado Disposal's endeavors to help them in their efforts of philanthropy with our local nonprofits to improve our communities and to help our, our community members thrive. So thank you, and thank you for your work as city council members. We appreciate your efforts, and thanks to El Dorado Disposal for their philanthropy and our community giving back. So thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Do we have any other questions or comments from the public? No? Okay, I'll invite Mr. Brown to come back up and answer a couple of those questions, if you noted them.
Yes, I can, I guess, speak to the idea about the laminated card. Open to that idea, always re-exploring different educational material and what we can get out to folks, so we'll bring that back to the team for sure. As far as the out-for bid, you know, I, I guess I could speak to some of that, and then I could let staff speak to some of that as well, but generally speaking, we have a contract with the city of Placerville that goes out to a, a certain date, and when that contract is up or leading up to that, there's negotiations with the city to continue our partnership or where we go from there. And I don't know if you want to add anything, Cleve?
Yeah, I believe the current contract runs through 2030.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here this evening. As always, we appreciate the great presentation and education to the public. Thanks. Okay, we will move on to item seven, the consent calendar. I have questions from the council, or anyone want to pull an item? No? Okay, we will open the consent calendar for a public comment. Okay, I'm seeing no one. We'll bring it back to the council.
I'll move consent. I'll second.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item eight, public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Okay, we will open public comment to anyone who would like to come talk about things not on the agenda.
Sue Rosenrodman, resident, and I'd just like to congratulate our Steve Yule for the job that is being done for the city pool this year. It's a real joy to go by and see all the little kids splashing and having a great time.
Thank you.
Hi, Ruth Michelson again. I come to you as a merchant, as a member of the Placerville Merchants on Main, and I wanted to really thank the city staff and the city council members who have come to our last two meetings. Steve Yule, thank you for coming two months ago, it's very helpful for us. And then last month, Jackie No and John Clarici came. No, not John Clarici, Michael Saragosa. What an error on my part, I'm sorry. But we want to ask you, eh, next time... But we want to ask you next time, and whoever else hasn't yet come, because it was very, very helpful. You guys stayed for an hour and a half. It was a really, really productive conversation. And I think all the merchants who were there felt very positive about it. Thank you for connecting to us in that way. We really covered a lot of ground and so appreciate that. And I also just wanted to say that, of course, we don't represent all merchants. It's a different model now. It used to be all merchants were automatically part of the Merchant Association. And so we had a much larger membership. Now you have to pay $75 a year and not all merchants do that. But for the merchants who choose to and who choose to come to meetings, I wanted to say that at both of those meetings, with you, Mr. Yule and the two city council members, Mayor, we talked about the combining of the Christmas parade and the tree lighting and doing them both on the day of the Christmas parade, which I know this year is December 8th. We talked about having a parade start a bit later, like at 3:00 and going till 5:00, and then having the lighting at 6:00. And I want to say that for all the merchants who were there, it was unanimous support of that idea. Unanimous support. And I know there's some question about whether that could be accomplished this year because of the timeframe, but we would be very supportive of that happening this year. We would like to have Black Friday without any closure, keeping the street more available to shoppers that entire Black Friday day on Friday. So I know it also would be a big savings. I know that's a big issue for you. I'm not staying for your discussion on budget, but you know, now that street closures are seen to be $6,000 or $7,000, it seems like that might be a prudent move, thank you.
Thank you.
Leo Bennett-Kochon, grandparent of three wonderful Plasterville residents. I've come before you many times to speak about the wagon train. I'm in District 5, I could talk to you about Lake Tahoe. But I'm here today to talk about Plasterville, the county seat, the little town that could. I've heard that on July 30th, you're going to have a workshop to discuss special events. I know this is open forum, but under the Brown Act, you can give general direction to staff. I urge you between now and then to give direction to staff. As I've addressed before, your special event coordinators, like myself, are feeling so stressed as we ride, sorry, I can't help myself, we ride this wagon with you and it's been so rocky. You need to review your history from my perspective. This council, when Member Saragosa and Mayor Burnoo, back when Terry Zeller first brought it in front of you in 2022, decided not to charge any fees. Then COVID, actually, that was 2021, then COVID hit. There was a $1,000 fee with a $500 waiver. They were estimates by staff for my particular event that ranged from $1,000, and then you had $5,000, then you have $6,000. The block parties coming up, that's your merchant group, they're struggling like crazy to come up with a number that has never been in your budget. In the future, you will have object codes. Hopefully, you know what the wagon train event actually costs the city. But I can tell you, in the past, everybody cooperated. Comp time, we didn't have the police department there because public works, staffed the car, it was empty, nobody was in it. They had a radio and we had keys, we could move it. Gosh, there wasn't an emergency. But there's so many ways we can bring this cost down. And that's my central point, that is, on July 30th, you should look at how can you make this as cost efficient as possible? Because your prior city council also said that changes should be implemented step by step, incrementally, to jump from events that cost us just what we raised to add value to the city's contribution in labor and a low level of expense in such a short period of time. I can assure you, they may come up here and say, we can do it, they're stressed. And I just urge you to lower that stress by collaboratively coming up with a way that's much more cost effective. We've done it in the past. I helped with the Christmas tree lighting. Combining events is another way of saving. But we had meridians and they did not cost us the amount of staff time that's in the budget. So you know, there's just so many ways we can make this work together, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will bring this back to 8.2. Are there any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, number nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. We have none, we have no ordinances. We will move to public hearings. 11.1, consider adopting the proposed fiscal year 2425 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented, Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Mayor No, members of the council. So over the past six months, your budget team, which is comprised of the city manager, all department heads, and the Assistant Finance Director, has collectively developed both the operating and capital improvement program budget in a manner that aligns with the city council's established fiscal policies, strategic plan, and maintains essential program delivery to the greatest extent possible. As part of the budget development process, the city council, excuse me, held a special budget workshop on May 9th and staff presented the department requests for alternative service levels or changes in ongoing program, capital outlay or equipment, CIP projects, and conference training travel requests, and received input from the council and the public. A second budget workshop was held on May 29th and staff presented the draft operating and CIP budgets for 2425 and received input from the city council and public as well. The Measure HL Sales Tax Committee met on April 15th and June 3rd to discuss the proposed street sewer system and water system projects that should be funded and constructed over the next year or more. The committee's recommendations have been incorporated into the proposed budget. As an initial public hearing was held regarding the budget on June 11th and staff received additional input from the city council and public. So this is the third time you've seen this, so it's old hat. An initial public hearing, or excuse me, both the proposed operating budget and CIP budget essentially include the same revenue and expenditure assumptions as what was discussed at the initial open hearing. The attached budget documents are the same format as in the past, including multi-year summaries, all aggregate operating revenues, expenditures, as well as the detailed expenditures summaries for all departments and divisions and CIP projects. The proposed operating budget is balanced and totals $24,682,058. The proposed general fund budget is balanced and totals $11,302,762, which is 10.67% less than last year. Last year's general fund budget did include a little over $1.1 million in planned one-time deficit spending. The operating budget includes expended, excuse me, expected economic impacts, including existing salary and benefit commitments to employees. The proposed budget includes a little over $74,000 for training, travel, and conference, $692,000 for new equipment, from desktop computers to the replacement of a utility truck at the Public Works Department. With the cooling local economy, the proposed general fund budget was more challenging to balance as compared to budgets over the past few years. Five very important full-time positions had to be frozen or unfunded in order to balance the budget. Staff takes these cuts very seriously and will continue to look for ways of gaining further cost efficiencies and raising revenues in order to restore those positions. For example, staff is working on completing the update to the master fee schedule and the water wastewater cost of service study later this year. The proposed CIP budget totals $2620,141 and includes six new projects from remodeling the Orchard Hill Park totlot replacement to the U.S. Triptogreen Congestion Management Resilience Strategy Project. The budget is a living document that can be revised at any time. And I would like to publicly thank the budget team, the Measure HL Sales Tax Committee, the city council for once again, working together to balance this year's budget, which is a responsible plan for operating the city over the next year and beyond. I also want to thank your Assistant Finance Director, Natalie Torn Casa, for all the work she did in preparing this year's budget and several analysis. So with that said, I respectfully ask that the city council approve the budget as presented tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Questions from the council? No, okay, we'll open this for public comment.
I commend your team on doing a very thorough and transparent job. I asked to see various documents, they were very cooperative. My degree's public administration and, you know, I like looking at budgets. It's a living document, as was shared, and it's my understanding, back to special events, that included in this is the revenue and expenses for the five city-sponsored events that now carry their own, the wagon train, the block party, et cetera. Roughly $6,000 each, $30,000 total. Not in there is the roughly $6,000, so times three, roughly $18,000 for Halloween, for the Christmas parade, and for the light. Those are considered kind of legacy and I urge you to revisit that if my understanding is correct. Because I've heard it said over and over again, be fair. I'd rather you bring it all down to like $2,000 or something, but if you're going to charge some events the full cost, then I feel that you just need to charge all the events. And then I know at some point you'll redo your resolution that created the model of a city-sponsored event with cosponsors and nonprofits. We're paying it for you, we love you, but you're kind of now the endorsing party because you're really not putting any money on the table if we have to go out there and beat the bushes and replenish it. So just, you know, look at it all, try to lower the stress and then please be fair to all of us, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sue Rodman, member of the Measure HL Committee. And we have worked with Dave to figure out what can be done and can't be done with the income that's coming in. And it does look to be a tough year, but we've had tough years before and will probably have tough years again. So sometimes my dad used to say, you tighten your belt and go on. So I think that's the kind of year we're having. And I'm going to be very interested to see that rate study.
Thank you. Okay, just for clarification, remember the public said that he thought that our budget included five city events? That wasn't my understanding, I thought it included three city events. Well, okay, let's just clarify.
The budget includes the costs, the associated costs with the legacy events, including the Halloween, trick-or-treat on Main Street, the tree lighting, Christmas tree, or excuse me, the Christmas parade, fishing derby. Thank you, Steve, unless I'm missing anything?
That's correct.
Okay, what about our cleanup events that we do twice a year?
It's just a sunk cost that we take into account.
Okay, so we'll still have those events? Okay, that's all, I just wanted to highlight those and make sure we all understood what we're talking about. Okay, any further discussion from the council? Wow, you guys are quiet tonight. Well, can I have a motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move the 2024-2025 Steel Plasterville Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program Budget.
I'll second that, but I'd also like to make a comment. I did a little, it's just a little thing, it's a little thing. It's 28, 28 million bucks, thereabouts, give or take, plus or minus, okay. We asked, we run a pool and other recreation services, which by and large actually benefit people that don't live in the city. Most, I think, Steve, most of our participants live outside the city. We asked for $111,000, give or take $1,000 to help, from the county, to help with our pool because it's an older pool, it's a lot of money to keep it going, blah, 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 gets used a lot. That very nice letter from that grandmother about her toddler, grandchild, and Savannah is a result of us doing something, and my guess is that person probably doesn't live in the city. The odds are they don't, the odds are they live outside the city in Eldorado County. We asked them for $111,000, they graciously gave us 35-ish?
37,500.
$37,500. They have a budget of just north of $1 billion. Eldorado County provides no recreation service to any of its citizens. If it wasn't for us, the CS and the two CSDs, nobody in this county would be getting recreation and they shorted us $75,000. So if you live outside the city and you want to do something in the city, maybe you should go talk to your supervisors and ask them to give us this money. Because this is one, it's not the only reason. And Eldorado County does a lot of great things. But we're short because of things like that. And they charge us $225,000, give or take, for our animal control. And that number's gone up quite a bit over the last four or five years. They nickel and dime us and then they get us when they want to charge something. So if you live outside this city and you want to do something inside the city, I suggest you go talk to your board of supervisors and get them to help us out. Because I can't guarantee that there would be any money for other things, I wouldn't know where it would go. But we take care of the folks in this town first and then the business owners and the property owners. That's our charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, we have a first and a second. Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you. We will move to 11.2, consider establishing the appropriation limit GAN for fiscal year 2324 and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mayor No, members of the council. So this is a routine item you see each year. Section 7910 of the State Government Code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriations or GAN limit by resolution. Each year, the city is required to adjust the GAN limit by both prior per capita personal income increment and the prior year change in population. The change in per capita personal income was actually 4.44% and change in population was actually negative .34, according to the State Department of Finance. Based on these factors, the fiscal year 2324 GAN limit is calculated to be $30,888,000. The general fund proceed revenue, subject to the GAN limit, is $9,114,807, leaving $20,893,281 of unused appropriation limit. Once again, Plasterville is well within its GAN limit. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask that you adopt the GAN limit resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? No, okay, we'll open this for public comment questions. Seeing no one, we'll bring this back to the council for a motion.
I move staff recommendation for 11.2.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item 12, discussion and action items, 12.1. 12.1, consider approving construction contract change order nine and ratifying CCOs numbers 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, and 13 with Doug Veerkamp Engineering Incorporated in the combined amount of $120,802.82 for the Broadway sidewalk project and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mayor Noe and council members. The item before you this evening will discuss for your consideration a number of construction contract change orders for the Broadway sidewalks project. The Broadway sidewalks project is constructing segments of curb, gutter, and sidewalk and select storm drain and waterline improvements within the limits of the sidewalk work. A construction contract was awarded to Doug Veerkamp General Engineering on December 12th, 2023, and the contractor was given notice to proceed with construction on March 15th. Since construction began, work has been well underway. Construction of the new 10-inch water main segment from Blair's Lane to the east is nearly complete. Retaining walls have been constructed and some of the new concrete curb and gutter has just been poured this week. During the last few weeks, though, some unforeseen conditions were encountered in construction that required a number of contract change orders. While the contractor was excavating in the area of the new sidewalk, a few water service lines were discovered to be in very poor condition, some of which were also shallow. The contractor was directed to replace these water services to avoid future leaks underneath the sidewalk. Additionally, three other significant water services, one providing water to residents on Baco Court, another to Save Mart, and another to a PG&E yard, were previously believed to be, I've got like weird feedback, sorry. They were believed to be connected to the 10-inch water main and it was discovered that all of them were connected to the old 4-inch water main that is going to be abandoned with the project. Thank you for taking control of the situation. All right, is that better? All right. Carry on. Way to save the day. All right. So the 4-inch water main is being abandoned with the project and all of the water services must be connected to the 10-inch mains. So those were some significant additional project costs. Other unforeseen conditions included changing a retaining wall height that resulted in the need for a fence, and there was also rock discovered in a utility trench requiring the contractor to use other means and methods to excavate. The total cost of CCOs 6 through 13 is in the combined amount of about 120,000 and staff is recommending their approval. While we have enough contingency in the budget now, it is also worth noting that staff is currently in discussion with the Eldorado County Transportation Commission to secure additional federal funding to cover some of the additional project costs and others that will be coming in the future. That item will be brought back to city council for approval of the budget appropriation if that moves forward. That concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. You have questions from the council? Seeing none, we will open this for public comment questions.
Sue Rodman, resident and have watched Broadway disintegrate over the years and now we're trying to resurrect it. And it's the project from hell. It seems that everything we touch either breaks or is found to have a problem in that whole area. So you can see why the street has been disintegrating over the years, just because we had all these leaks and problems underneath it. And until we fix them, it won't really get better on a permanent basis. So I'm glad we have a really competent contractor who's willing to put up with all of the wild things that we find under the ground in Plasterville and to actually make this work. So, and we have a great engineering department to be able to put up with all this and pull it out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring this back to council for further discussion and a motion.
Obviously, this is a situation pretty common in this town where you dig up a road and find, whoa. Anyway, this actually has to do with the budget more so, and I just, talking about all of this reminded me, you know, we're supposed to, I forget the number, but we're supposed to have like 36 or 7 million bucks on capital projects over the next, not too many years. And if we were to get some money right now, I know exactly where I'd put it and that is back into staff because we do not have enough bandwidth right now, or barely enough bandwidth, to do this. And if you think projects take a long time, just try to do it understaffed. It doesn't work. And so this is kind of a thing for the budget as well, at least from my humble opinion, and I don't speak for the other four people up here. If we do get some money, I know where I'm going to put it because we need to get these projects done fast. It's the only real good way to do a capital project. So I will move the staff, oh, I'm sorry, if there's any more comments. I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second. But first and a second, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Mayor Noe.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to item 13, council reports from other agency meetings. Eldorado Transit, we didn't meet. Transportation Commission didn't meet. LAFCO.
We did not meet, but we still have our open public member. So if any public member would like to apply to be on LAFCO, the application deadline is July 10th.
SECAG?
Yes, we did meet. We were over in Yuba City. We took a big vote, which was the land use assumptions for the entire six-county region. That will still be fully adopted in 2025, but it's sort of the first leg. Then you do the transportation assumptions as a second leg. So then we have basically another year to work on transportation assumptions, first year being land use. So a big hurdle to go over and then tomorrow, we leave for Denver on a meeting with, a meeting with Dr. Cog, the Denver Region Council of Government. So I think there's about 20 of 28 jurisdictions going, including staff, and then SMUDS are sponsored for it, so they're going along with this as well. So should be interesting to see what Denver's doing. There were, our population will be in 15 years as a six-county region, so maybe looking a little bit into the future when we go and see what they're doing out that way. So more to report when we get back.
Great. Thank you. Pioneer?
Yeah, they did meet. Unfortunately, I was not able to make the meeting, so what I did do was review the video because they're kind enough to do the same thing that we do here. And the three presentations, they pretty much went over, of course, like we're doing here, budget review and approval, also some JPA update on minor corrections on the JPA agreement. And then the most interesting was a presentation on cost difference of PG&E and over all other power companies statewide. Basically, they highlighted how PG&E is pretty much two and a half times higher than every other statewide power company that is provided for the state. Went over some of the EV costs, as in 2019, the EV cost of your vehicle was 35 cents a kilowatt and it is now double that since 2019. So just highlighting a whole bunch of things. SMUD, they're two and a half, 2.25% higher than SMUD's bill for residential customers. PG&E customer using 750 kilowatts a month pays a lot more for electricity than he she was a customer, any other utility in the state, pays 2.6 times higher than a SMUD customer. So they were just doing a really great in-depth cost analysis of what PG&E was compared to our JPAs and our local utilities that are owned by their own counties or cities.
Great, thank you. All right, Fire Safe Council did not meet and Opportunity Knox.
Did not meet.
Okay, that makes that quick. We'll take public comment on item 13. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Requests for future agenda items? Anyone? Okay, none. Brings us to item 15, 15.1, receive and file May Fire Station 25 run report. Anything you want to highlight, Chief Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All the stats for Station 25 are in there. Our crew's been very busy. You will note on the front cover, they had a pretty technical confined space rescue on Upper Broadway for a dog that had gotten into, back into a mine about 200 yards and then gone down about a 60-foot well. Back in there. So crews took about two and a half hours to complete the rescue as a permitted confined space entry with rescuers on air and monitoring the air. And as you can imagine, when they get inside that, that deep into the mine, there's nowhere for them to anchor their rope systems and all those type of things, but crews did a phenomenal job. But other than that, I'm happy.
Thank you. Thank you for that hard work, that dangerous work, geez. Take it, the dog lived. Is the dog okay?
Dog was, yeah, it was fine, actually. Watering well, so thankfully, it was probably a little startled, but it came out well.
Great, great, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on that. Okay, questions from the council? No? Okay, we'll open item 15 for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back. Item 16 is a list of upcoming items which you can read yourself, which brings us to item 17, which is adjournment at 6:05. Thank you.